This meeting in Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to convene today. Lord God, we thank you for those in attendance. Father, we thank you for this great opportunity to serve, Lord God, and we ask that you will continue to guide us, to keep us, Father, to keep this great city, to grant us with the wisdom to make decisions, Father, that are pleasing in your sight. And through it all, Father, we will learn to give you the glory, the honor, and the praises, for it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session to City Council and the Public Safety Committee held on November the 2nd.
So moved.
Twenty-second, I'm sorry. Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes. And that was October the 22nd.
Yeah, October 22nd, I'm sorry. The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify the payments of accounts for the week of October the 18th through the 24th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to ask Ms. Rollins and Mr. Stewart and Ms. Nancy Stewart to come up, please, I've known these folks since these two were real young, and Ms. Rollins and her husband, known them for when I was real young. Anyway, whereas epilepsy is a neurological disorder producing brief disturbances in the normal electrical functions of the brain that temporarily affect a person's consciousness, bodily movements, and/or sensations while creating long-term effects on the lifestyle of individuals with epilepsy. One in 26 people will develop epilepsy, and one in 10 people will have a seizure in their lifetime. Epilepsy can affect anyone, no matter what their gender, race, age, religion, educational background, or socioeconomic status. Epilepsy is more common than Parkinson's disease, multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, and cerebral palsy combined. Epilepsy affects more than 65 million people worldwide. While there is no cure for epilepsy, drug therapy, surgery, and other non-pharmacology -- pharmacol-- pharmacy, that's a big word like mayonnaise. Treatment seems allowing approximately 80 percent of individuals with epilepsy to lead a normal life with either no seizures or a significant reduction in seizures. The annual observance of Epilepsy Awareness Month advocates for the rights, humane treatment, and appropriate education of all persons with epilepsy, while raising awareness with families, professionals, and the general public to better understand this lifelong disorder. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, hereby proclaim the month of November as Epilepsy Awareness Month, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, schools, to recommit to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of epilepsy through education while ensuring that all individuals with epilepsy lead a full and productive life.
Well, I do want to thank Mayor Gotten and all the council for this proclamation. The Purple Proclamation Project is something that Epilepsy Education Everywhere is launching in order to get on record around the country that November is Epilepsy Awareness Month. And our mission statement is to empower, to thrive, to prevent, to control, and cure. Epilepsy, along with non-epileptic seizures, affects nearly 65 million people of all ages. Regardless of the severity of the seizures, families are affected greatly, and in some cases, life is put on hold due to the threat of having a serious seizure. For this reason, I hope to begin the Think About Epilepsy program, which educates fifth graders to recognize seizures, provide first aid, understand the challenges living with seizures and epilepsy. The program promotes tolerance, and it creates positive attitudes towards people with seizures and epilepsy. And I think it's just wonderful that y'all have done this. I thank you all so much, making that November is Epilepsy Awareness Month. Epilepsy comes in so many different forms, and there's no one drug that controls it. And ironically, it was four years ago, this November, that I was diagnosed as someone that suffers with a form of mild seizures. And hopefully, with this proclamation, more people will come aware of this life-altering disease. I thank you, Mayor Gotten, and I thank you, Councilmen, for your support on this Purple Proclamation Project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nancy. Nancy's, for people that don't know, she's on our Board of Education here in the City of Gaston. She does a real good job. Her husband, Steve, helps coach with the basketball team in Gaston City Titans. He does a good job, and they couldn't do as good a job they do without Ms. Rollins. I set them aside, because she's a pillar of the community. Her and her husband live in Walnut Park over on Forest, and they're just a pillar to the community and a pillar to the city. Thank y'all, I appreciate y'all. The next one's unfinished business. We have none today. The next one's, this is time and place as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement on nuisance on property located at 13 Dwight Avenue in District 6, the State of Alabama, Jerry Don Williams and wife Jackie S. Williams being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case involving a burned house last August of 2012. There've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
And Brian, while everybody's looking at this, this would not qualify for a rehab. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any questions or discussions? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 124 West Kyle Place in District 7, the State of Alabama and Shirley Rose Meadows, Preston being the last owners. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2011. There've been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Brian, are you sure there's a house there?
There is.
You're gonna have a hard time finding it.
That's just an example.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 11 was a public hearing assessing nuisance at property at 310 Bryan Street. We're gonna table that today for seven days. The Building Department wants us to table that for seven days.
Make a motion, we table for seven?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Bass Trail. This is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament on April 5, 2014, and the amount is $5,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 13's a resolution authorizing agreement with International Fire Protection Incorporated. This is for the inspection and testing of fire protection and alarm system equipment at the depot, and the amount is $3,800. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have under a first reading today is ordinance amending fiscal year 2014 budget. This is to reflect receipts and proclamation of an emergency solution grant in the amount of $180,000, which is to be distributed as follows: $22,000 to the Love Center, $76,000 to the Salvation Army, and $82,000 to 13th Place. This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. That brings us down to number 15, new business.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a few items here that I'd like to ask for consideration under new business today. There are two here that I'd like to bring up in tandem as it relates to amending the fiscal year 2011 and 2012 CDBG budget. I'd like to ask that we consider that today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both ordinances today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, these two items, as I mentioned before, one amending the 2011 budget and the other amending the 2012 CDB budget are related to road projects or street projects that have had their line item adjusted by more than 20 percent. So by law, when that happens, we have to pass an ordinance amending the budget. So that's what's taking place today. And again, these are road projects that have already been completed. We're just amending the budget to reflect the actual cost.
Any further discussion? There's no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both ordinances, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
Any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I also have a resolution approving in advance for travel expense. I'd like to ask that we consider that today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is again approving travel expenses in the amount of $462 for travel to the National Legal Cities Conference in Seattle, Washington.
I will say that one member's driving out there in his vehicle. I think it's about a 2,500 mile trip. And I don't know if he's ever been that far before, but maybe he can find his way back. Any more discussion?
No comment.
I have a GPS.
Well, somebody has to say it. Sounds like weak thinking.
If you hadn't upgraded that GPS in a while, it might not work.
I've got a 2013 automobile. I think it's got a pretty good one in there.
We'll get off that since we've finished discussion. Let's take the vote and see if it gets to go. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any further new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution conveying property to the First United Methodist Church. I ask for unanimous consent to consider this.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Any discussion on this?
Yes, this is a property that where the old Newgin building once stood, and thank goodness we got that building down. It's been an eyesore for many, many years, and this is actually selling the property to the First United Methodist Church, $45,000 to help us recoup some of that money that we spent taking that building down. So this is what this is about.
Few more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one additional item. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Liberty Learning Foundation. I'd like to ask that we consider that today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is an item that we funded on last year, and it supports the Liberty Learning Foundation, which is an arm of the Davis Lee Companies. This program has been well received within the school system, so we're gonna look at funding it again for the current year.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business? That brings us down to department reports, committee boards. Do we have any today? Shane, Ellison?
I'd just like to take a moment to remind everyone that next Wednesday, November 6, is the Patriots Day Luncheon, which will occur at Convention Hall. The doors open at 11:00 a.m. Program starts at 11:45, ends at 1:00. Tickets are still available, so we're trying to fill up Convention Hall. You can see myself, Councilman Reed, Councilman Harris. I believe the chamber also has tickets and tourism, as well as the Patriots office down at the amphitheater. So there's plenty of tickets still available. Then shortly after the conclusion of that program will be the dedication of the new museum at the Ola Lemias Park there at Nakalula Falls. So we encourage and invite everyone to attend.
Brings us down to citizens' request. We have someone from Westbrook School wants to speak with us today. Actually, three people, it looks like.
Back up.
If you'll state your name and your address, please, for the record.
I'm Jeremy Gliori. This is Hayden Clay. And we're, well, first of all, I'd just like to thank y'all for your time and for getting us on your agenda. We're from the Westbrook Christian School Government Classes, as you said, and we were just, currently, there's no road in Alabama named for Iraq and Afghan war veterans. So we adopted a challenge-based learning project to get a portion of 411 named after Afghan-Iraq war veterans, specifically the portion from in front of the mall where it's at where 411 intersects 759 all the way to the county line at Asheville.
Good morning, council. Specifically what he said, it is from where it intersects from the mall all the way to where you enter Asheville. One thing that really made us want to do this is we were looking for a project that we wanted to adopt that we really cared about, and we were taken aback when we found out that there really was no road named after the veterans of the Afghan-Iraq wars, which was pretty much the war of our lifetimes, and we wanted to honor them. I already told you where it was, but what we're doing, we're really taking on the whole project. We want to facilitate all the fundraising for this part of the road. This specific part of the road has already been cleared by the Alabama Department of Transportation, and it is not enough for anything else, so we made sure to clear it with them. What we're pretty much here for is we asked for a resolution that would allow us to name this road. We already had a group go to Rainbow City City Council last night, and they did accept the resolution, and they are drawing it up and about to vote, will soon vote on it. But we have their approval. And if we get a resolution from y'all, we do have support from Senator Phil Williams. There's a letter included in the folder. If we get it passed from these two councils, we will pass it on to him, and he's ready to sponsor it and take it through the state senate and the rest of the legislature for us. So we are hoping with your approval, we will be able to get this passed and have a successful project. And I think we have an example of what the sign might look like right there. And we'd like to thank you for your time, and we would really appreciate your approval on this project. Thank you.
We will bring this up at the next council meeting about trying to get that approved for you through us. You said Mr. Williams already had it where to go through, is that what you said? Okay. I didn't see the letter, I'm sorry. Just stick with him, maybe y'all get that through, you know, but we'll draw up something for y'all for next week and try to get our part done for y'all.
Letter's part of the package. Mr.?
You got any discussion on this?
No, just, I don't know if we need to officially request, since we've got this letter from our senator, I'm gonna officially request that you draw up a resolution for us to, prepare a resolution for us to pass on this.
By next Tuesday, hopefully.
As soon as you can.
Long got it. All right, guys, it's in our attorney's hands, and we should have it. Next brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Ben, you want to go first?
Yeah, Kay Moore's not here. I was, it's First Friday. I think Heather's coming up Friday. Okay, all right. Okay, well, just we'll just invite everybody to First Friday. And I think the newspaper's carrying most of that anyway, so look to the newspaper for the information on it. The Gaston Museum of Arts is starting their Vietnam War Month, and that's one other announcement we did want to make, and it's gonna coincide to start with First Friday. That's on this coming Friday, November 1. Shane mentioned Patriots Day. We want everybody to know about the honorees.
Yes.
Billy, I think that's most important. That's what it's all about, is that. And tomorrow, it'll be in the Gaston Times, right, Andy? Okay. So we will be naming those to look forward to. Yes, Shane?
I didn't say. Tickets are $10.
Okay, tickets are $10. Okay.
Being our speaker, dynamic speaker.
Yeah, if anybody in here that went to Memorial Day this year will remember the dynamic speaker that we had. He's Command Sergeant Major Leonard, I gotta get the name right, Kathy. Leonard Kathy.
Remember Kathy?
Okay, he will be our speaker then, so I think it's well worth the time to come out and listen to him. When he opened up at Memorial Day, I said, "Lord, they help us." And then all of a sudden, he leveled off and went right into patriotism, and it was absolutely great, wasn't it?
Patriotism at its best.
I guess that's about it. I just want to invite everybody to come to Patriots Day and the Patriots Lunch.
Okay, Ben. Council President Echols?
I don't read my papers.
Councilman Stewart?
I'd just like to commend the students for coming out and taking on this project. You look like you've done your homework and you got it rolling, and we'll certainly do our part, and we appreciate your interest in the veterans from Afghanistan and Iraq war. We appreciate what you do. I don't have anything else.
Councilman Avery?
Would mention, we've got some trick-or-treaters out this Thursday, so be alert, and sometime they'll dart in the streets, so be very, very careful with the kids when they're out. Trick-or-treating.
Councilman Avery?
Thank you. Councilman Cannon, I have a couple announcements. First announcement, first Saturday, I want to do it before I forget. This is first Saturday on Tuscaloosa Avenue. They're gonna have a veterans program at Tuscaloosa Square. They start around 1:00, I think. They got a couple of speakers. I can't remember who the speakers are at this point. But they're asking you to come out. They're gonna have plenty of vendors out, giving away free hot dogs and a number of other things. I think they borrowed something from Johnny. But in any rate, this will be the first Saturday here at Calvert Square, starting at 1:00. And like I said, they're gonna have a veterans program. They have a couple of veterans who's gonna be speaking for a few minutes there. So we're asking everybody to come out. I too want to thank the group from Westbrook, is that right? Yes, Westbrook. This is how government's supposed to work. And I find it very, very interesting that this past week, we've been had a bunch of stuff going on in this city that I have a major problem with. The young people at Westbrook seems to know how government work, when we got people in government who don't know how it works. It's my understanding that the legislative delegation wants the city council to pass a resolution unanimously in order for them to give the people the right to vote for Sunday I've got 16 resolutions and letters that we've sent to the legislative delegation, asking them to do something. We did it unanimously, hadn't heard back from them. Even had a meeting with them on second, I mean, February the 3rd, 2012, with the delegation on the fourth floor conference room. And we've asked them to do a number of things for us, and we've done it unanimously. And like I said, we haven't heard back from them, they hadn't done a thing. Now, all of a sudden, I get a letter here from Rep. State Senator Williams, asking us to do something. And see, we ain't like them. You just heard me ask the city attorney to draw that up right away, because that's how government's supposed to work. So when those guys in Montgomery find out how government's supposed to work, I'll be glad to vote for a unanimous resolution, asking for Sunday sales. But until they ask me like they asked me to do this, they can forget it. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to point out that five of those letters are related to seven-day sales, if I remember correctly. Five of those requests were related to seven-day sales, and they were passed by this council, many of them, before I came into office. So I think the city's done its part and took, taken a pretty strong position as it relates to that. I think what you'll get almost without fail from these council members is that they just want people to have the opportunity to vote, whatever their position is as it relates to that. And again, you know, it always concerns me when an elected official puts their personal position in front of the ability for people to vote. position in front of the ability for people to vote on an issue. That always concerns me. That's not how our democracy is built. So, I'll leave that alone. The only other item I wanted to bring up is I have shared with the mayor's office and the president of the council a couple of memos that are, as a result, of the subcommittees that were established some time ago. The window, as I mentioned earlier, was a tight window that we commissioned these subcommittees to actually review the issues of youth programs in the city of Gaston and diversity, and diversity at City Hall. Those committees, again, were commissioned for a short time, so it did not allow them to be able to do what I would like to term as a deep-dive exercise into those two issues. But what they were able to do is take a look at a very high level, the current state programs, processes, and policies within the city, and identify the current situation, and then make recommendations. So, I'll, again, I've shared those memos with the president of the council and the mayor's office. They'll have an opportunity to review them, have had an opportunity to review them at some degree. Will likewise be sharing that, those memos with the media, and then we'll move forward. And again, as I mentioned before, these are recommendations. I think you will find that they're very meaningful items. You know, I've had some conversations with the mayor, and of course, he's very supportive of doing the things that we can do to improve where there are opportunities to improve. You know, one of the things that I think comes out of this exercise and this process is that City Hall gets the chance to take credit for some of the things that it's already been doing. One of the things I'd like to highlight is that, one of the things that I've noticed here in the last eight years that I didn't see before was the utilization of minority and women-owned businesses through the city's purchasing process. Now, while there was no formal process to make that happen, it happened. And it happened because it was on somebody's radar. So, again, that's just one thing to note going forward. There's some opportunities, and this pretty much just gives a relatively independent group the opportunity to review and a community-based group to make some recommendations as it relates to that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Councilman Cannon. You know, I too have a problem with someone dictating their own personal feelings or convictions on the people of the state of Alabama, and particularly the people in the city of Gaston. When we ask for the right to vote on an issue, and it doesn't matter to me one way or the other as far as their personal convictions, my personal convictions are, but the people in the city of Gaston deserve the right to vote on any issue that they deem necessary, that this council and that the people in the city of Gaston want to put before them so they can have a vote. That's democracy. Democracy isn't, "Well, I don't believe in that, so I'm not going to let you vote on that." That's not democracy. That's the very opposite of what this country was founded on. So, I have a problem with that. And my understanding is that I missed the Kiwanis meeting on the day that Senator Williams was there as a speaker, and these points were made very vivid, in where it's Council Kristin Oles asked a question, and Lisa from Commercial Development had questions about it. But, you know, we're just at a point to where one or two people can dictate to you what you can and cannot vote on. People, that's not right. Under no circumstances do we advocate that. So, I think we all, we are all in agreement on that, on a number of issues, not to just say seven-day liquor sales, but on a number of issues that we have asked to have the right to vote on, but been denied by our legislature. Plans for the Boys and Girls Club are moving forward. Al Harrison presented a very detailed information to us today as far as where the Boys and Girls Club is now. He did say, and that he was hoping for November the 15th, but a more realistic date would be December 1st. Looking forward to having a Boys and Girls Club open December 1st. November 15th may be, will be a stretch. So, in order to give you, well, a more realistic date, December 1st. And we're looking forward to the Boys and Girls Club opening up again in East Gaston, and then as things get better, then we open the second Boys and Girls Club on the west side of the city. But stay tuned. We want you to be involved and understand that this is not the Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Alabama. This is the Boys and Girls Club of Gaston, Itawak County. Not the Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Alabama. A new organization with new directors, new board of directors. So, stay tuned for more of that, and we look forward to your support. Litchfield Middle School, again, I ask for your support at Litchfield, in particular the parent-teacher organization, and the principal there at Litchfield. Neighbors, community, city of Gaston, grandmothers, grandfathers, uncles, and aunts, get involved with that school so that we can take that school to the next level. As I stated last week, they have a scholar, they have established a Scholars Bowl out there, and we will be in 100% support of that, of the Scholars Bowl out there at Litchfield. But please support them with your presence, activities, and your financing. Today, I think I'm correct in announcing that today is a National Stroke Awareness Day, and for those of you who have those attributes that contribute to strokes, be mindful of those items, high blood pressure and diabetes and things, you know. Prevent having a stroke by keeping those health items in mind. And the last thing I want to say is, well, Bean, you know, we talked about Patriots' Day, the Patriots' Luncheon. I encourage you to come out and participate in this program. It's going to be a good program. We'll have Patriots' Day, and then we'll have the unveiling. We'll have a, after the Patriots' Day, there's going to be--
The museum on the mountain.
The museum on the mountain. We're going to ribbon-cutting event there. So, basically, you know, what we're saying is, you know, we're getting into the stage of, the stage of the year where we honor veterans, and we want to make sure that we do everything that we can in our power to show those persons who have done the uniform of the United States of America that we appreciate what they've done for this country.
Mr. President, before the mayor wraps up, I did want to mention something about the parade that was canceled this year. I just want to let everybody know that it doesn't have anything to do with the Patriot Luncheon. However, it's something that we are really going to miss this year. But I think the Cultural Arts is going to be having a veterans observance on First Friday. And then I do want to say this. I think with the cooperation, and I already think we have it from Heather and you at the Chamber of Commerce, that we're going to get back on track with this parade by next year. And it'll be a combination of the Chamber, the Patriots, and other entities in the city of Gaston to get this put back together again. I'm looking forward to that. Just let it be known that we may miss one year, but we're not going to miss anymore. Thank you, Mayor.
I do want to thank Ms. Bean and her students for coming up with that idea. I think it's a great idea. I think the former service men and women and the ones current, and especially the wounded warriors, they don't get enough credit or enough attention. I want to say, and I may not be wrong on this figure, but I think there's around 380 or 400,000 wounded warriors who've lost legs, arms, eyes, brain trauma, all kinds of things, who need a lot of help, and I appreciate what you're doing. I think that's a great idea, and we'll definitely help you with it.
Councilman Avery?
Yeah, you know, I can't go without getting this teaching moment. We've got the government class here, and give them a good lesson in government, again, because I want them to understand what's going on here. If you watch the national news, you see where you've got a group of guys up in Washington who've got these personals beliefs and vendettas against somebody else. And as a result of that, the people suffer. And I think someone said a few minutes ago, "That's not good government." And what we have here is the same thing. Like I said, this council on 16 occasions that I've documented, that we've asked the local legislative delegation to do some things, and we passed it unanimously. But yet, I understand that they want us to pass another unanimously resolution or letter or whatever, asking them to support Sunday sales. And then one of them, I understand, said that he wouldn't support it under no circumstances. So, why would he ask us to send the letter when he knows that nothing we can do because it starts at that level? And you guys are positive proof where it starts, because you got a letter here from the State Senator. Y'all went to them first before y'all came to us. And so, you know, keep in mind who you send to Montgomery. Keep in mind who you send to Washington. But they support you on this issue. But just think if it was something else, they personally didn't approve of. You don't want people in office who don't personally approve of issues. You want people in office who's going to represent the people. "I don't drink," and I've told this before and will tell you again, I know you young folks don't, never have, "but I will give you that right if that's what you want to do." I'm not going to sit up and pass judgment just because I don't drink, and say, "I'm not going to pass anything that deals with alcohol, just because I don't do it." That is crazy. Remember who you send to Montgomery. Remember who you send to Washington, and remember who you send to City Hall. That's your lesson for the day in government.
Mr. President, let me say this as we wind down here. We have a procedure to speak before the council, and it's a little procedure that you need to get on there Friday before. But I noticed a young lady held her hand up and wanted to say something, and let's make an exception and let her speak if that's agreeable with everybody.
You have to come to the mic.
Come to the mic, because we can't hear you. Mostly going to record you.
Yes, may I give your name and address, please, for the C. Clerk, please?
My name is Tammy Bean. I'm the U.S. History and Government Teacher at Westbrook, and I would just like to state publicly that we just appreciate Senator Phil Williams and his leadership in Alabama. He has been a wonderful example for my students, and he will see us through this whole process successfully, I'm sure. We appreciate his service in two terms in Afghanistan and Iraq, the Iraq War. He's a principled man, and so we just, I just wanted to state that publicly. I appreciate his attention to this matter.
Well, he will appreciate that, too.
Yeah. Let me, no, 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 no. I want to say something, too. I want to make sure these students understand and the teacher. I admire Phil Williams as his service and all of that, but when you take on the position that, "Because I don't do something, I don't like something, and I'm representing the public," then I got a problem with that. You know, it's good to go over and fight the wars, and I appreciate that, and I respect him for that, and I love him for that. But when you start taking positions that, "Well, I don't drink, so I'm not going to let anybody else drink, and I'm not going to let anybody else vote on it, whether or not they can drink." Or you ladies out there, "Just because I'm not a lady, I don't want you to take contraceptives and do all that other good stuff." That's a problem, because what's next? I see a few blondes out there. Guess what? I'm going to pass a bill that everybody who's blonde can't vote. How would you like that? Or the few of you who wear glasses. I'm going to pass a bill saying everybody who wears glasses can't vote. You got to be careful about those folks. They're good on one end, but you don't need people who are good on one end. You need people who are good to people, period. And that's where I have a problem, and I'm not going to let it get by without saying that. I respect him for all he's done, but I would respect him more for what he would do to let the people have an opportunity to say and do what they want to do.
I want to thank Ms. Bean for coming forward, and I agree with you totally. This country was formed on controversy. If you don't believe it, read your history. At least we're not up here shooting each other, which has happened in our past. So, when I see a controversy or I see all these things come about, there is compromise at the very end from Washington, which I don't agree with those folks up there right now at all, all the way down to right here. But at least there is room for controversy, and I think eventually it'll get around to it. But you've got the right idea, Ms. Bean, and I hope you pass it on what you did today.
Mr. President, I'd like to say just one thing. Thank these young people for what they did. Thank them for--
Absolutely.
There's so much apathy as it relates to the political process with people my age and younger. And so, it's always encouraging to see young people step up and actually take an active interest. You know, we need people who not only are protesters, but people who understand the process and who understand and get involved in the process. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate what Mrs. Bean is doing, and we'll support what you've presented to us today, for sure. And again, thank you for coming today. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to review.
I agree.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, again, I'd also like to say, you know, as a veteran, you know, as a Vietnam veteran, I truly agree with your issue, you know, of naming a portion of Highway 411, you know, in memory of Afghan, Afghanistan, and Iraqi soldiers. I truly do believe that that is, that would be a very meaningful tribute to those persons who have served, just as the Vietnam Trail or whatever we have on Third Street, the Korean. We have highways dedicated to all people of all different wars and skirmishes that we've had to be involved in in this country, and we appreciate that. I certainly appreciate Senator Phil Williams' contribution to this country in the form of his military service, as well as his service to us as a senator in the state of Alabama. Take nothing from the man's integrity or anything else. He just needs to give us the right to vote on issues that we think are necessary, are meaningful to us.
May I adjourn? No, before I adjourn, no. Can't adjourn yet. Haven't had my speech yet.
That's right.
I got a real important speech, guys, tonight on Wall Street in Alabama City, what everybody's been waiting for. It's trick-or-treat on Wall Street. We've got 30, 40 people going to give out candy. There's two bands down there. Make sure you bring all your little tots down there tonight and get all that candy, because there's probably a little over $5,000 worth of candy being bought, and we want everybody to go home with them little guys so they can keep their pants up tonight. Have a motion to adjourn? We adjourn.